Meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Campus.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pecow.
Here.
We stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, approval of the September 16th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of September 16th, 2024.
Check it.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Here. Or aye, sorry.
Next on the agenda, proclamation honoring Connie Gergone's 107th birthday.
So it's amazing to be able to be able to lead this and proclaim and recognize the 107th birthday of Connie Gergone. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing, not only for the individual, but also for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experience this individual brings. And whereas the Village of Orland Park recognizes with respect and admiration the contribution of the senior citizens in our community. And whereas Connie Gergone was born on October 11th, 1917, in Chicago. She was one of five children and they grew up in an apartment over her family's market on Wentworth in the Chinatown neighborhood. After graduating eighth grade, she worked at her parents' store until the day she got married. And whereas Connie married Sam when he was, when she was 28 years old and they were married for 46 years. Her fondest memories were raising their five children, weekends at local ballrooms, dancing together, and when Sam retired, they went to church every day together. And whereas Connie moved to Orland Park in 1996, where she still lives on her own in her condo. She still enjoys dancing, singing, cooking, praying, decorating, and cleaning her condo. And whereas she has the, had the opportunity to travel extensively throughout the US as well as multiple international cruises and a trip to Europe. Her favorite adventure was to Las Vegas, doubling down on her luck in life, once even winning a jackpot. And whereas Connie's family describes her as fun, independent, a food lover, and an entertainer. Connie enjoys being around her friends and family. She has five children, five grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. Connie attributes her lasting good health mainly to the fact that she never learned to drive. She was in her 40s, her husband tried to teach her how to drive, Connie put a stop to it, literally taking her hands off the wheel. And you survived that, that's good. Sam got the message and did not try to teach her again. We husbands are good at getting the message sometimes. She was happy to walk everywhere she needed to go, walking, walking daily, eating healthy, laughing a lot, and a positive outlook on life has kept her healthy. She is thankful for God's gift of a long life and has always tried to never live a boring one. Her family and friends firmly believe she will outlive all of them. Now therefore, it is my honor, Keith Pecow, Village President of the Village of Orland Park, Illinois, and the Counties of Cook and Will, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 11th, 2024, Connie Gergone Day in the Village of Orland Park.
That's right, I'm sure they'll tell her.
Exactly.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He's quite the gentleman.
Bill, you've got at least 30 more years.
With the way I, my comments, I got 31 years.
Oh, do I have to? You're all right, right now.
That is.
Well, exactly, that is exactly what I was gonna say, yeah. All right, next agenda item, proclamation of Toro Construction Imports as Orland Park's Business of the Month for July 2024.
Oh, you're here, okay. Sorry, I didn't see you. So it's my honor, you know, we do a business of the month, we try to make sure.
Do a business of the month, I try to make sure we do it every month. And this month, we're honoring Toro Construction as the Business of the Month for October 2024. The Village of Orland, whereas the Village of Orland Park is proud to recognize outstanding local businesses that contribute to the community's economic growth, diversity, and vitality. And Toro Construction was opened by Socorro Vasquez and Luis Vasquez in 2004. During expansion in 2021, they decided to open a location in Orland Park. And having a passion for skilled trades and a commitment to fair labor practices, they were inspired to create a safe and equitable work environment, leading them to open, leading them to open a union company that would ensure that workers receive fair wages, benefits, and training opportunities. The quality and craftsmanship that comes from Toro Construction is significant. Ultimately, it's about making a positive impact on their employees' lives and the projects they undertake. And growing up in a family that valued hard work instilled a deep appreciation for the construction trades. Having mentors in the industry who demonstrated integrity, skill, and a commitment to quality, and a lifelong fascination with construction and design significantly influenced Luis to open the business. And Toro's Construction's involvement in the community extends to working with Orland Park Mayor and with the Orland Park Mayor and local officials through various events and sponsorships. Building those relationships helps the business stay engaged with the needs of the community and allows them to contribute in meaningful ways. And whereas with projects finished on time and within budget, being the first Hispanic company to receive the GC of the Year Award from the HACIA. And the dedication of Toro Construction to excellence reflects positively on our village and serves as an inspiration to other businesses. And now therefore, I, Keith Pecow, Village President of the Village of Orland Park, Illinois, and the Counties of Cook and Will, do hereby extend the gratitude of the entire community to Toro Construction for exceptional service to the community. And hereby proclaim Monday, October 7th, 2024, as Toro Construction Day in the Village of Orland Park. And I've been out to tour their operation here in Orland Park and it is very fascinating to see that the kind of mass production of carpentry work that's used in homes and businesses and offices. So, and I know that you're looking to expand, so hopefully we have some, some good space that will work for you elsewhere in the community as well, because I know you're getting kind of landlocked in the space that you're in. So please, Economic Development, Steve, that's the guy to keep working with to help you find a location. So, so we really appreciate it, so thank you again.
Now we've got a plaque to go with all your other hardware.
Thank you, everyone, for this recognition. It is sincerely an honor. I think it's so incredible of the village that you do this. It truly speaks highly of the environment that you set for business owners, so thank you. And I apologize for Luis not being able to be here, he got a little bit held up, because as you know, construction doesn't stop at five, right? We have to keep going. So he was.
Especially when you're the owner.
Yes, yes, more than anything. So thank you very much for recognizing not just us, but for doing this regularly for all your businesses. And yes, we are looking to expand, so as I said, I'll be reaching out, now I know who. We're very, very happy for all the support we have received here in Orleans since day one, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
We have one person signed in, again, three minutes for commentary. The board doesn't engage you, we don't enter a debate with you, we listen to what you have to say for the three minutes, and we may or may not comment on those if we so choose to, but in any case, it's not an engagement back and forth. No yelling, clapping, et cetera, from the, from the audience. It's, this is a business meeting, so we conduct it as such. With that, Jim Oakwin.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, Jim Mulgeen, I'm here on behalf of Doug Herzog, he's the property owner that is the subject of the involuntary annexation that is on the agenda later on. I'm gonna try not to be too redundant with the comments that I previously made at the committee as a whole. But my client, from the beginning when the annexation issue came up, has always been concerned about whether his property would be forced to annex to sewer and water. Once again, his property is approximately, is well over 600 feet from the roadway. There's a creek that runs through the middle of a property, also a bridge, so for him to connect to sewer and water would be a massive undertaking. And because of that, we raised those concerns with the village. We have been told by the village verbally multiple times that he would not be required to connect to those services, provided his well and septic continue to operate. And we have no problem with that. We understand that if it's not operating, we would be forced to connect. However, we wanted something more than just a verbal commitment, we wanted an agreement that also provided some security for us in case there's a change, obviously, in the board or on a staff level. We did receive a memorandum of agreement, but that memorandum of agreement included a bunch of additional provisions that had no relation to those specific issues. That established greater obligations on my client, including, you know, possible payment for municipal improvements, a blanket utility easement over his entire 4.6 acres. And those obligations were obligations that run with the land in perpetuity, so they continually remain on the property. The protections in terms of not having to connect to sewer and water, those obligations, which are the village's obligations, are temporary. If my client decides to sell his property or transfer the property to his children, that, that agreement would terminate unless the village would agree to extend it. So we would once again have to renegotiate that agreement where there would be possibility of additional obligations that my client would be required, you know, to undertake. It also has a negative impact on the valuation of the property, because a buyer doesn't have security that they're not gonna be required to connect to sewer and water. Once again, we have no objection to.
Forty-five seconds.
Yeah, we have no objection to connecting if things aren't operating, but if they are, we want what has been promised of my client in, in writing. And we're happy to negotiate in good faith to make sure that both the village and my client are protected. So thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak for agenda-specific items? And I see that Luis came here, do you wanna speak about the, you wanna talk about the Business of the Month? Since it is on the agenda, you can talk about it.
My apologies for being a little late, I underestimated the traffic. So we appreciate the honor to receive this Business of the Month. To those who don't know Toro and Integrity Wall, we're, we're very proud to be part of a whole land community. Since day one, the mayor's office always offers support to allow us to grow. Technically, in the last two years, Toro has grown almost 40%, because we have the space and we're able to expand. And of course, we're already looking for ways to expand again. The mayor's office also helping us to find additional buildings where we can continue expanding. We currently employ over 100 people, all tradesmen, and about 25 people in the office. So we feel proud again to receive this Business of the Month award or recognition. Thank you, Mayor, for, and we'll continue to support your administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Luis, I appreciate it.
Accounts payable, September 20, September 17th through October 7th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable September 17th, 2024 through October 7th, 2024, in the amount of $6,886,029.99.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for September 13th, 2024 approval, item B, payroll for September 27th, 2024 approval, item C, Mindsite Consulting to deploy Microsoft Intune and Autopilot, item D, NOBE for cybersecurity and HR training software. Item E, special event permit for Orland Square Mall Boo Bash 400 people, item F, professional MEP and architectural services contract extension, item G, Mineral Masters contract amendment, item H, fall tree removal project, item I, fall tree planting project, item J, T-Mobile lease agreement amendment number one for water tower number one. Item K, holiday lighting services contract extension, item L, SB Friedman Development Advisors as needed consulting services 2024 downtown Orland Park. Item M, OPHFC emergency wall and tile repairs, item N, installation of redundant PLC for SCADA system, item O, Village Code Amendment and Good Standing ordinance, item P, Shusha Park Phase Two Construction Engineering Amendment number four.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve items A through P of the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
1455 through 1467 82nd Avenue Annexation.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon. I would adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Annexing Property 14555-14567 82nd Avenue. Surrounded, unincorporated territory, and authorized the village manager to enter an memorandum of understanding within 90 days of the passage of this ordinance, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
So we've heard the, the comments that were made, and I'll make comments if the board wants to add anything, but that, so this has been an ongoing discussion for several months. These two properties, I think this is the third or fourth time it's been up here, we've delayed it a few times up till now. And they've been engaged in memorands, to try and get memorandums of understanding done, apparently a few issues remain. These two properties, mind you, have the potential to be commercialized, which is why we don't wanna leave the village exposed to the county's whims. We've had some, we've had some properties like this where someone was looking to buy and move into and put businesses on it that would not fit with the surrounding area. And we don't want that to happen. Additionally, these are areas that can be annexed by others, so it's a concern. So, and some of the issues that were brought up are concerning, because certainly not the board's intent. As far as sewer and water, I don't think there's any desire for the board to force anyone onto sewer and water, even a subsequent owner, until the county won't let them anymore. So I don't have any problems with that extending beyond ownership. As far as the rest of it, I don't think the, the board wants any of these memorandums of understanding to extend beyond ownership. So, you know, whether it's goats or chickens or whatever. So, or businesses that are operating, we would allow them to keep operating, but I think after that ownership, then we would no longer allow that. But as far as water and sewer, I see no reason to force, we're not looking to force anyone. But many of these properties will probably be forced by the county at some point, because when their systems fail, they'll probably be forced to get water. And they'll be thankful at that point that they're annexed. So, so it's, we also, as a board, we cannot tie the hand of a future board, so that's important as well. So we can't, there's things we cannot do, certain things in perpetuity. But things like easements, and you mentioned, what was mentioned was a blanket easement, utility easement on the entire property, I think that would be a taking, it would be illegal anyways. But obviously, the board has no intention to do that, however, we do have the intention to have easements that would be normal and customary to be in perpetuity. So along roads and those types of things, you know, along signs of properties, that's pretty customary, so we would expect that to be in place. So what I would like to see, so I'm willing to postpone this one more meeting, but the next meeting, we're annexing this. Because these two properties, we're not gonna leave the village exposed on these two properties. But what I think the board would like to see is, I'd like to see a list of, so sit down over the next two weeks, figure it out, but if there's still things that are, that there's not agreement on. I wanna know what the village is asking that's not being agreed upon, I wanna know what they're asking for that the village has not agreed upon. And the board will give direction on all of those things for, for us, so that, so that, Jim, you know what, what the board's direction is and where you can go. Okay? But regardless, and you have up to 90 days to get that MOU done after the annexation, but regardless, in two weeks, we will annex this. But we do wanna have that information. Does the board have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
We don't have a, a Google map of the property, but the, the home is set way back off the property. And so you have 82nd Avenue, which is, you know, who knows what's gonna happen with that over time. You had, for a long time, you had, the golf course was talking about redeveloping and what might happen with that property. So we definitely are not looking for an easement over the entire property, totally understand how that would be impossible to sell that at some point later. But it's not gonna disrupt the, the families living there or the ownership of the property to go along those lines like we would do with anybody else. So I think saying that it's a blanket easement is, from our perspective, a non-starter, we're not, that's not something we're looking for. The gentleman mentioned a few times, and we did a little bit of our own research on the property, there is a, a family dynamic there that you could see where the village needs to be protected. There could be a, a next generation that doesn't want to live there, doesn't wanna own that property, and it's a big piece of property on a, in a very potentially, you know, valuable corner of Orland Park. And what might go in there in terms of a business that, you know, we may not want is, is why we need to protect it. People have talked about the tax dollars on these annexations, for the $500 to $1,000 we're gonna get on taxes to go through this, to have our attorneys look at this, and to use all of our, our staff resources, that's just, that's political fodder. People are throwing that out to try to, you know, cause problems. This is not a tax grab by any stretch.
We have to flower and maintain, and maintain it.
Exactly.
So we will spend more than we're getting in taxes.
Right, so people that actually look into it for the reasons we're doing it, and we wanna come to an agreement, we wanna come to an agreement with everybody on these annexations. This is not something that we're trying to be confrontational about. So I, I'm glad that your counsel is here and, and has explained it well, what your side is, and we've given direction, and we will continue to give direction to our legal staff to work this out, so thank you. That's all.
Any other comments? So I'll entertain a motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be October 21st, 2024.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
I'll just postpone to the next meeting. And please make sure you bring us what we're looking for, hopefully you guys, hopefully you come to an agreement, but if not, where the outstanding issues are, and the board will give direction about what, what we'll accept and what we won't.
Next item, Gust Annexation, 11250 151st Street Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Campus.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Authorizing Annexation Agreement, Gust Property 11250 West 151st Street.
Second.
Any comments? Thank you, Dave, appreciate it. I know that we've been working on this agreement for a while, so I'm glad, I'm glad we got it all done. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Next item, Main Street Triangle TIFF Amendment Ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Village of Orland. I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, approving the amendment of the Main Street Tax Increment Financing District.
Second. It's a good thing that Trustee Radiszewski's here to help you out. You've missed her.
He's been helping me.
Do we have any comments? I have some, and this is a blanket, because there's like four of these that we're doing, okay? So it's been a long haul to get here on this TIFF. The members of this board inherited a mess that began over 13 years before I was elected. Back near the turn of the century, it was that long ago, Dan McLaughlin and Jim Dodge concocted this, this plan to play developer with the taxpayer money and get Orland Park into the real estate development business. It's not a good idea. The McLaughlin-Dodge administration made several mistakes that were foreseeable and doomed this TIFF, this TIFF district to failure from the beginning, including never having a plan. Not before beginning the project or during the project. Starting a TIFF when neither a single developer or the village had control of the properties. Using TIFF dollars to buy out businesses. Using the threat of eminent domain to force property owners to sell to the village. Building infrastructure for development with no development plan. Using $64 million of taxpayer money to build apartments and putting a nonprofit in a TIFF. Mind you, this is not hindsight on my part. Trustee Dodge, who was on the board in five different decades, was also my neighbor and someone whom I considered a friend. I opposed all of this and told him so, every time we agreed to disagree, and I would leave him with the following comment, "Since the decision has been made, I hope you're right, but you're not." It turns out, I was right, they were not. Since the inception of the McLaughlin-Dodge Triangle TIFF, it has lost over $45 million of our money. That can pay for a lot of projects, a lot of streets, and a lot of roads. The trustees and I have been trying to fix this mess. COVID obviously set us back a few years, but I think we finally have a plan, and there's been a lot of opportunities for public input. We've held so many public meetings on this, I can't even keep track, but it's certainly north of 15. We finally have a market-driven plan to develop this area, it has entertainment, retail, restaurants, and office space. Importantly, it has no new residential, and it is something that everyone in Orland Park can enjoy, not just the residents that live within a few blocks. What is also important is that the incentives for this project are completely funded by the project itself and not by other village subsidies. The biggest incentive is the TIFF, and the TIFF is being done the way it should be, which sets it up for success. For those of you who wanna learn more about TIFFs, there's a great video that was put together by staff that other towns are actually using to educate people on their TIFFs, so you can be educated on how those work. Additionally, the business tax district that we're creating does add a 1% sales tax only for this area, only for the Triangle TIFF, and only for the length of the TIFF. Once the project is paid for, the TIFF and the business tax should be ended by future boards. I wanna thank Edwards Realty for continuing to believe in this project. I wanna thank staff for all of their hard work, and I wanna thank all the trustees for tackling this issues, this issue. I look forward to hearing the LOI announcements that are coming soon, and the upcoming groundbreaking, which is coming soon, I see you head nodding, and seeing this project completed in the next several years. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Downtown Orland Park TIFF.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, approving the downtown Orland Park Tax Increment Financing District, the downtown Orland Park redevelopment project area, the eligibility report, and the redevelopment plan and project.
Second.
Any comments? Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance Designating Orland Park Business District Number One.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Campus.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Orland Park Business District Number One, Downtown Orland Park Business District.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Downtown Orland Park Redevelopment Agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Village of Orland Park, to adopt a redevelopment agreement and E&amp;R Development LLC for the redevelopment of the downtown area of the Village of Orland Park, Illinois, subject to attorney approval of all exhibits.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
So the next item, application fees and fees per square foot was tabled at the COW, so we won't be discussing it.
Dugan Park Construction Engineering Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve awarding RFP number 24/059, Dugan Park Construction Engineering Services, to Christopher B. Burke Engineering, LTD, for an amount not to exceed $238,490, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
Super, super excited to see this park go forward. The pickleball courts and just how it's laid out, it's going to be a great improvement for that area and for our parks. Thank you.
Any other comments? So Ray, I noticed that, obviously, this is an RFP, so we judge things not just on price, we judge it on all of it. But I see someone for $168,000, which seems to me to be an outlier way low, which means, tells me they didn't really see the whole scope. Could you tell us a little bit about that company?
Sure. PLIs, so they, they were the outlier, about $100,000 less than the other firms that bid. And while they have some portfolio that supports their work, we believe that they didn't look at the full scope of work and that way underbid the project. So they are the only firm that were under that $200,000 mark, and so we consider them an outlier, not qualified for this project.
And I know we also have our engineering look and basically assess what we think the bids are going to come in at, and that was an outlier way low?
Yes.
Okay. And then Bowman Engineering, who I've never seen before, they're low by like $6,000 or $7,000. Do you know anything about them?
They really don't have experience related to parks projects. So if you look at their portfolio and what they submitted, they didn't really have anything that related to this type of project.
Yeah. Well, I would agree that for $7,000, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't take the risk. So I see that Christopher Burke came down, or their price, which we can do, we can negotiate with someone. So I noticed that their price that we're approving, so I'm assuming they came down when we contacted them?
And part of that is, when they did their original bid, they included lighting for the baseball fields and the soccer fields. So when they relooked at it and re-proposed it, they looked, they proposed just on the scope, and that's how we got to that lower number.
Okay, great. And, and the reason you went to them for, because I know that you went to them to negotiate, but...
Yeah, they have great experience with the, with the village and developing parks like this. They've developed other parks that are very similar with soccer fields, baseball fields, and especially the pickleball court component. They also have a lot of experience with stormwater development. So this project has a lot of stormwater that's going to be impacted in that neighborhood, and as it relates to 143rd Street. Travis Perry with Christopher Burke Engineering is here, and he could review that for you if you'd like, if you'd like to answer any questions.
Well, no, I, I trust, I trust you, and Burke's done a lot of good work. If I recall, Burke, and I guess I'll just ask you, you guys did the work that was over in, kind of the, just over the tracks there, all the flooding work we had. You guys did all that work, right?
That's correct.
So, so they have, so you guys have experience with all that, including the neighboring park, Brown Park. So, so that makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure. Also, like Trustee Katsinas, this is an exciting plan. I do want to thank all of our residents who completed surveys and gave us input in our parks in general, and Dugan specifically. It, we listened, and it had an impact, because it, that's why we're adding lighted pickleball courts, is because of that input. We are also rehabbing the field where St. Mike's plays football and soccer is played in other parts of the year. Additionally, the full-size baseball field will remain, and a new playground will be installed. So I really want to thank staff also for applying for and receiving a $600,000 grant, which moved this project up a year. It offsets the costs in our facility. I look forward to seeing this built over the next two years, following on the heels of John Humphrey, Centennial Park West, and Schusler. It's a great next step in revitalizing our large parks. So thank you. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Job Fair and Public Safety Forum, joint events between the Village of Orland Park, Village of Tinley Park, Orland Township, and Cook County Commissioner, Sean Morrison.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve the 2024 Public Safety Forum and the 2025 Job Fair Memorandum of Understanding Between the Village of Orland Park, the Village of Tinley Park, and Orland Township, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
This is, it looks like it's our second annual time doing this. This was very well attended, would encourage residents to come. And it is a joint effort with the mayor of Tinley Park, I believe our Orland Township Supervisor, Mr. O'Grady, and Cook County Commissioner, Sean Morrison, in addition to our mayor. It's a wonderful program. It was great to see all these leaders getting together to help all their communities collectively. So it's a great event. Strongly encourage your attendance.
Any other comments? So these events were very successful last year. I look forward to doing them again. This year, we will be moving the Job Fair to Tinley Park Convention Center, since it's much larger and it will help accommodate all the job seekers and businesses that are looking to participate. I also want to thank Tinley Park Mayor Mike Lottz, Orland Township Supervisor Paul Grady, and Cook County Commissioner Sean Morrison for agreeing to join me at the Public Safety Forum. Call the roll.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Next item, amend Title VII, Chapter IV, Number of Class A Liquor Licenses Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
Move to adopt ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter IV of the Orland Park Municipal Code Regarding the Available Number of Liquor Licenses Issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
License Agreement for Intrepid Fiber Optic Installation.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Campus.
Approve a license agreement for fiber optic installations in the public right-of-way with BIFIV for Intrepid OpCo LLC, operating as Intrepid Fiber Networks, and authorize the village president to execute said agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Why is this not showing me the motion? So I think we need to amend this motion to authorize the village manager to execute said agreement?
I was wondering the same thing. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend to the second clause to authorize the village manager to execute said agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any comments on the main motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
Well, I, I'm just not, I mean, believe it or not, I'm not familiar with the fiber optic installation. But this is a license agreement just to do that? And it is, is $10,000 the right price for this?
I'll let George answer that.
So Intrepid is an internet provider, so it's fiber, fiber internet. They're based out of Colorado. They've, they're well-capitalized. They're part of well-established Brookfield Infrastructure Partners. So they're well-capitalized. The, there are two acts. There's a federal act and a state act, which restricts local governments on denying access to telecommunications providers. So you may, the board may recall small cell wireless providers. We can't restrict them in that way. Same thing, we can't restrict for fiber optic right-of-way. This isn't unlike what we have with AT&amp;T or Comcast. We have franchise agreements with them. Now, they do pay franchise fees, but they pay them only on the TV portion. They don't pay it for the internet portion. And some feedback that we've received throughout the community is their, folks are always looking for better internet. I mean, it's, it's just, it's that important now. So it's, I think we're very fortunate that we're the first community in Illinois that Intrepid has signed an agreement with, and we will be the first community where they will be breaking ground. And this is primarily residential. So they will be doing five or two homes. So it's, it's a very good project. The $10,000 is in line with what is allowed by law. And we're going to work cooperatively with them to minimize any disruptions.
So we're restricted by law as how much we can charge? Because 10,000, I don't even know if that covers the legal fees to cover to look at this agreement or whatever. I mean, it's really not much for the village. It's, and I'm just unfamiliar with being restricted on that. My other comments are, you know, the investment banking company is almost amazing. You know, they got, you know, $10,000 is, you know, not that much to them. And I think, I think fiber optics would be good. I just don't know, what's, there's an agreement after this that's going to have to be done?
Nope, this is it. They have to apply for permits to do all the disruption, and they have to restore everything until they disrupt.
Correct. Yeah.
But this is different from Comcast, which is, I mean...
Well, it's a competitor of Comcast, so it gives us options. And AT&amp;T, U-verse, for example, didn't serve my neighborhood. So we're, it's a monopoly in my neighborhood. So this is basically competition.
That's my point, Mr. Mayor, if I may. This brings another option for people, and hopefully, in theory, capitalism brings the price down for people if there's other options.
Almost certainly what will happen is, there's going to be a marketing from the competitors, from Comcast and AT&amp;T. We saw that when AT&amp;T rolled out U-verse. They called it Project Lightspeed. When that was rolled out, Comcast really sharpened their pencils. And, but now we're down to two. And in some subdivisions, we only have one.
Yeah, and they don't sharpen their pencils much. In fact, they keep, they keep taking the racer and adding more to it every month, or every year, so.
Yeah. So, and fiber optic internet is really where everything is headed, because it's unlimited speed. So there's, and I, you know, as far as a $10,000 license fee, whether it's good or bad, it's really so that municipalities don't get in the way of these telecommunications providers. And so far, I mean, it has worked out for us. As far as the small cells, we really don't, they've used it judiciously. We don't even really see them, but they're, they're popping up everywhere, and we don't really feel it. So I think it's going to, I think it's going to work out real well for us.
And George, is there any benefit to being the first one?
It's, it, what the benefit is, it provides, it provides competition to our residents sooner.
Good. Thanks. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Aye.
Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any, any non-scheduled citizens or visitors for public comment on, on items relevant to village business?
Nobody has signed in. Is there anybody here to speak? Okay. Board comments. I'm going to go first and last. So I'm going first because I want to begin by thanking George for his five years as our village manager. So thank you. You arrived at a time when we were facing a lot of unknown, of known challenges. It began with the early retirement, which resulted in about half of our non-police full-time employees leaving. So think about that, half of our employees. And the dilemma of having to replace the top two leadership positions in every department. I think only two of them, they moved up. Everybody else, they took the early retirement. By the time you had arrived, we had identified the deficiencies in our capital improvement programs, the fact that we were paying for operating costs out of our capital, the, the fact that our streets and parks were suffering from woeful underinvestment, the needs for John Humphrey, the needs for Schusler, that our IT infrastructure was nearly nonexistent. And we had several projects, several other projects, like Centennial Park West, that were on the horizon. Additionally, we had identified all of the aforementioned TIF issues. They were all here. So we knew about all those, but we knew when we hired the village manager that a critical part of your role would be to help implement the solutions to those problems. From replacing our workforce, to implementing a five-year capital plan, restructuring the organization where it was needed, and updating our code, which was outdated in many areas, you played a critical role in making sure all of this was done. Then there was also the divided board and the continual antics of then Trustee Dodge, who treated you and the remainder of staff frankly like crap, and made everyone else miserable around them. He pontificated and voted against eliminating the mayor's pension eligibility, and tried to hand out settlement dollars to former village manager Lamargo. As a reminder, not only did Lamargo lose that suit, but he paid the village $30,000 to settle it, to settle the counter suit. Dodge accused the rest of the board for wrongdoing regularly, and really made it rough on you and the rest of the staff to have to navigate that. Words can't even describe how poorly he treated all of you. I want to thank you through all that time for your diplomacy in dealing with his antics. It's something that you and staff should never have to do. And then there was COVID. So I want to thank you for working hard with me through COVID and ensuring that village employees continue to work and provide services for the residents of Orland Park, which was the, the direction of the board. Nobody had pandemic on their bingo card. You didn't, I didn't. And there were a lot of things that we were in uncharted territories, very unprecedented areas. Well, most of the government agencies in Illinois stopped showing up for work, and I would say for a time, most of them stopped doing any work. Our employees continued to show up. We continued to deliver residents, and that's largely because of, because of you as a village manager. You did a great job of making sure, making sure that our employees could do that safely and that residents continue to be served. During your tenure, you, the board, and staff have transformed, transformed the Village of Orland Park into a place that is, in my opinion, a model example of good government to be emulated. You should be very proud of your critical role in making this happen. And I'm sure I speak for everyone here on this board that we wish you the very best in your future endeavors, whatever they may be. Trustee Campus.
So I do think that Mayor Pico said it all, but I do want to add to that and confirm. Thank you, George, for your years of service. I wish you the very best on the next steps I wish you the very best on the next steps of your journey. It's been a pleasure. Tonight, I also believe this might be the first time I've given back-to-back kudos to the same department, let alone the same individual, but it's certainly a worthy submission from the directors. I want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contributions of Sangita Santantham, who joined our Development Services team earlier this year. Sangita's impact has been felt across a range of critical initiatives, and it's clear that she brings a unique blend of expertise, insight, and forward-thinking to everything that she touches. With an architecture background applied to a planner role, Sangita has not only demonstrated an impressive grasp of our land development needs, but also shown an ability to bring clarity and innovative solutions to complex issues. For example, her work in researching residential rental regulations and helping us explore best practices from other communities is a testament to her dedication and analytical strength. Sangita's thorough approach and ability to see both the forest and the trees have proven invaluable as we continue to navigate the challenges and opportunities of development in Orland Park. It's professionals like Sangita who ensure that we, as a village, are always pushing the boundaries of what's possible, balancing growth with sustainability and quality of life. Sangita, thank you for your unwavering commitment and for bringing your knowledge, creativity, and leadership to our team. You're truly an asset not only to Development Services, but to the village of Orland Park as a whole. Lastly, while Hurricane Helene and the impending Hurricane Milton are far from Orland Park, I know many of our residents have family, friends, or coworkers who've been affected. My heart goes out to all those enduring the aftermath or preparing for what lies ahead in the next few days. To those in our community worried about loved ones, please know that we stand with you and hope for their safety and resilience. Moments like these remind us how interconnected we are as Americans, despite the miles and differences that may separate us. My prayers are with everyone impacted by these storms tonight. Again, George, you know, thank you for everything over the last several years. You've been an asset. You've helped us out where we needed help the most. And, you know, we wish you your best as, as you move on in your career. So again, thank you. Next up, the special recreation update. Got some great news again. The Owls Flag Football Team competed in the Special Olympics Regional Competition on September 29th, and they took third place, so congratulations to them. Also, three of our volleyball teams competed in the regional competitions at Oakland High School on September 15th and at York High School on the 22nd, and they all took third place as well in their respective divisions. So congratulations to them. And the bocce ball team will be playing on October 12th as well to qualify for the 2025 Special Olympics Summer Games. So as always, thank you to our staff, the volunteers, and most importantly, congratulations to all of the athletes because it's a well-deserved congratulations. Also, our Great Pumpkin Party on October 5th was well-attended. There was well over 1,200 people there. And again, this, this type of an effort, you know, this type of an event can't go on without all of our staff and all of the police officers directing traffic and our vendors that sponsor the event. Without them, we can't do things like this. So thank you to everybody.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just wanted to continue thanking George. I know it's not always been easy. We're all different personalities, and you've done a really good job of trying to juggle all of us. Not always easy. It looks easy up here, but it isn't.
I think she's saying dealing with the mayor is what she means.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was saying. But it, it...
Nobody needed that interpretation, I don't think.
It was very challenging, it's very challenging, and I thank you for always being a professional. Your communication is outstanding, making everybody aware of what's going on, department heads as well. I mean, just, we see what you put out. We know the village is going to be in good hands with Jim, who you've helped guide, so we thank you very much for that. And I truly sincerely wish you and your family the very best. Also, I just wanted to say October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Orland Park Police Department is participating with the Crisis Center of South Suburbia for a donation drive. The center is always in need of clothing, toys, and toiletries for people who have to spend time in the crisis center. Unbelievable organization. If you'd like to donate any items, there is a donation box in the lobby of our police department.
What I'd like to say is that the residents have benefited from, you know, I was, I've only been here about three and a half years, but I can tell all that's happened before and all while I've been on this, on the board, is that it's the residents that have benefited the most. I mean, you've guided us through a lot of entanglements and, and different issues, but the, you know, you put them first, and you, and you put that out throughout your staff, and I could tell that it's the residents and the people who work with you and for you. I think that was their main goal, and I, I think that's great. So good luck to you. I'm, I'm sure you'll do well. Real quick, this budget in brief. People say we're not transparent. People say we don't know what's going on in the village. This is amazing. It's online, it's, it's the budget in brief.
And you were mailed it, too.
And, and exactly. It, it goes through, I mean, I've looked at it before, but I've never really looked at it as closely. It has everything that we do, everything we've accomplished, everything we're trying to accomplish, how much things cost, where your money goes. I really encourage people to take a look at it before you espouse something. And obviously, people have agendas, and they want to say whatever they want. This, we can't hide from this. We can't hide, you know, from things we've done and money we've spent and money we plan on spending. We're telling you how we're doing it. We're trying to do the right thing, but it is really amazing. It's a great job my staff to put this out there. It answers so many questions, so please take a look at it. If you have questions or you really want to speak on an issue, this is giving you a good head start. And last thing is the Bears play at 8:30 on Sunday, and your local favorite establishment, watering hole or establishment, most of them will be open. And we have passed, make sure that we have your favorite libation starting right at 8:30 for, when you watch the Bears win their, what is it? Fourth in a row, fifth in a row?
Third in a row.
Third in a row.
Yes, well, some of us will be watching it live, so have fun.
Some will be watching it live, yes.
So have fun, and you done?
I'm done, yeah.
So I didn't want to jump into your comments.
Oh, I'm done. Was that, was that a question or was that a statement?
No, that was a question. So, so yes, the, to piggyback on that, we, as the liquor commissioner, I did extend the ability for them to open up early for, for the Bears game since the Bears games are a pretty big revenue generator for them, to allow them to open up early if you so choose to go there. But a reminder to all of those businesses that you still are required to let us know that you're opening early so that our police department knows. You can't just do it. You gotta, you just gotta let us know. That's the big thing. So just like St. Patrick's Day for those, so all of the business owners should know that. I want to thank everyone and staff, Ray, for doing such a great job with the Pumpkin Party. I swung through in the afternoon session, and there were kids having fun everywhere. And I saw that, that, I saw the numbers today, and I saw that we were actually about 125 over the maximum because we were going to sell 750, and we ended up with over 800 each session, and we ended up with more in the afternoon session, which was the one that wasn't sold out. But we took everybody that came in, and we made it happen. So great job, and I know staff takes a great pleasure in this. And it was, and it's mostly kids. Unlike a lot of our events, which is a lot of adults, it was mostly kids there having a good time, so it was great. I also want to highlight some of the, an upcoming event or two of them. The Senior Luncheon is next Monday, the 14th. I will not be there unfortunately, but please, if you're a senior, come enjoy that at the Civic Center at noon. Next month, we have our Veterans Day Ceremony in about a month, a little over that. And afterwards, we will be having a grand opening ceremony for the new veterans building, so we will go from here over to there and dedicate that building along with the new memorial there. Please come out to both and then stick around and help us move the veterans groups into the new building as well. Lastly, I want to comment on the water pressure incident we had a couple of, a month and a half ago or so. Well, I thank many people for this. I want to reiterate my thanks to Tony Noto, Jack Spensner, and Kevin Arnold, our water plant operators, for the great work that day. But also, Kevin contacted me because I did a video on the water stuff, which you guys will see in, probably in the next month or so. But he, he wanted me to give a special shout-out to Nick Podsedlik, who happened to be in the village working on a Julie call that day because it was a Sunday. And Kevin called him and asked him to go to the main pumping station to tell him what he saw so that Kevin would know exactly what to do when he got there and he didn't have to assess the situation. So it is a testimony to a great team for that coordination, that cooperation, but it also demonstrated the kind of team player, players that we have, where Kevin took the time out of his day to email me and let him, and let me know that he really felt Nick should be recognized too for his efforts. So I want to give Nick and Kevin special recognition for their work. Also, my prayers go out to the victims of Hurricane Helene. Having been through a couple hurricanes, well, my family was because I had jets elsewhere, but when I came back, had to deal with the aftermath. And really, what people, most people don't understand is, yeah, you see the devastation from the wind, which can be catastrophic, but it's the rains that really do the damage and the flooding. That's what did it in New Orleans, that's what did it, you know. So for, for the ones I was involved in, that's where we saw flooding. And, and actually, the week of my son's wedding, my daughter came from North Carolina. We flew her out early, and her place got completely flooded while we were at the wedding here. So I'm a little bit familiar with it. And those floods weren't nearly as devastating to the community that these are. So I encourage people to donate. Also, if, if we could give people any local places that are doing collections or maybe put a website page up that has all of the different places, so you got one place to go or you can see where to donate goods and things because apparently, based on what we're seeing, FEMA is not doing a particularly good job on this. And I'm not going to go into the whys, but at the end of the day, that's what it looks like. So, you know, please step up and help. I know the Orland Park community has done this in the past, so please step up and help again. And so thank you all. Have a good next couple weeks. And I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. And just so everyone knows, we will be coming out of executive session and taking action on a few items.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Campus.
I move to go into executive session for A, discussion on the minutes of closed meetings; B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performances, or dismissal of specific village employees; C, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village; D, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the villager when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second.
Call or roll?
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. We're entering executive session.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Campus.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
I hear.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Reardon, or Trustee, Trustee Campus, other end.
I move to approve the appointment of Jim Colada as the interim village manager effective October 11th, 2024.
Second.
Call or roll? Actually, before you call the roll, I'll make some comments since you're digging up some stuff. So after receiving George's resignation, so this is just for the public to know this, the board decided to wait for a village manager search. Remember, after I was elected, Dodge and, Trustee Dodge and the rest of the village board hired McLaughlin's Deputy Democratic Committeeman as the village manager before I was sworn in, which was clearly intended to usurp the will of the voters. This was inappropriate, and it would be wrong for us to hire a village, a permanent village manager this close to an election. Frankly, this is the only form of government that this craziness is even possible. Therefore, we've decided to conduct a search process so that the final interviews are conducted after the election. There will be at least one new board member, and that person should be involved in, in the process. In doing so, we need to import, to appoint an interim village manager, and I am confident that Jim is very capable of filling this role. His work as an assistant village manager has been exemplary, and I'm happy to see him appointed. I'm also hopeful that he applies for the open position as village manager. Call or roll?
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Campus.
I move to approve direction to the incoming interim village manager regarding the appointment, negotiation, and entrance into the, into an independent contractor agreement with Brian West to act as the interim assistant village manager and authorize the interim village manager to enter into such an agreement, subject to attorney review.
Second.
And Brian West was an outstanding deputy chief, and I'm happy to support Jim's decision to bring him back as the interim assistant village manager. He's very capable of performing this role, and his integrity and dedication to the village is unmatched. In our form of government, this is Jim's decision, but I think the board is happy to support the terms of Brian's contract and, and his agreement to fill the role. Call or roll?
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani. Trustee Malani, I'm still here. No. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. The next item is a settlement.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the settlement agreement and mutual release by and between 139th Street Property Holdings LLC, an Illinois Limited Liability Company, and Nancy Eileen Verdoliak as trustee of the Nancy Eileen Verdoliak Trust, dated March 15th, 2011, and the village of Orland Park, and authorize the village manager to execute said agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? So this was another gift from the McLaughlin Dodge administration. They had a history and culture of constantly asking for more and more from developers and businesses that wanted to come to Orland Park. This one was from 2016 that we inherited, where they did the same thing, and they made some demands that, you know, were unreasonable of the developer. We tried to address it. I thought we made a very fair offer prior to this going to court. After lengthy court proceedings, it is clear that settling this by acquiring the property for the current asking price on the property, plus what we offered, and plus expected litigation costs, was better than going to trial. Since we have a project going along this property, it also allows us to easily get the right-of-way that we need for the property. It is unfortunate that the arrogance of the McLaughlin Dodge administration keeps rearing its ugly head, even seven and a half, eight years later, and costing the village money. But when all is said and done, and we sell the property, we think we'll be fairly close to hold on this one. So this was a, it's taken a while, but we've gotten to a good decision, I believe. Call or roll?
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll?
I'm sorry, who, who made the motion?
Trustee Malani, seconded by, uh, Trustee Katsinas.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Campus.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. We're adjourned.